It's now six and I call this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminder, before the meeting begins, we ask that you silence your cell phones. We will have the invocation by Councilmember Scott and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Cook. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear God, for another day. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, for a man has been able to come together one more time to take care of the citizen, the concern of our community. We pray to heavenly Father, you are blessed the one that here. Bless our community. Bless Mayor Anderson and his family. Bless everyone that's in the surrounding area. Lord, we thank you, dear God, for watching over us. There's so much crime going on, but yet you spare us to see another day. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you poll the city council members?
Mayor Anderson. Councilmember Richard Cook.
Present.
Mayor Coach Henry Full Singletary.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Money Crosby. Councilmember Yvinka Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember William Scott.
Present.
Councilmember William Askey.
Present.
Mayor Coach Henry Full Singletary.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed with the corrections of removing ordinance 2022.018 for second and final reading.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed with the exception of removal of ordinance 2022.018.
Certainly. Properly moved in second. Any questions? All in favor by show of hands? I need a motion to approve minutes from special call meeting, public hearing on September 27th, 2022.
Move to approve the special call meeting on September 27th, 2022.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? All in favor by show of hands? Presentations. Ms. Graham.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to be here today to introduce myself. My name is Tamika Graham. I'm born and raised right here in Lake City. I'm a licensed realtor with the largest real estate company, Kelly Williams. I would be serving the PD region and the Columbia region, and I just want the community of Lake City to know that if anyone need help or need resources, to reach out to me as the real estate agent. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Notes on comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to counsel.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
This is my water bill from last month to this month. My water bill, and this is a business account. Last month, my water bill was fifty-three dollars and forty-four cents. This month, I got a water bill of one hundred and one dollars and fifty-three cents, and it was because of the stormwater that was placed on it for forty-four dollars. And if all businesses have to pay forty-four dollars, I'm just kind of a little concerned about why it's almost double for businesses, forty-four dollars. I don't mind paying my share, my fair share, but I just think that the businesses, we're getting hit a little bit too hard. And I'd like for the council members and city administrators to just take a look at that, because I just think that's a little too hard on the businesses. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Allen Company with Brown &amp; Company. Three things I'd like to discuss. Number one, thank you to the council and administration for giving a little more disclosure in the agenda. There are some descriptive notes, but we come to the meetings and we don't really know what's going on here in the public. The minutes aren't put on the website. There isn't a place for them to be along with the agenda, but they're never put there. So, things like the wastewater fees caught me by surprise, even though I come to every meeting and I got that notice and I read it, I didn't go down to the bottom of page two, and it didn't say that that forty-four dollar charge per business is every month ad infinitum, as far as we know. So, there's a lot of concern as far as business owners that were already paying heavy taxes in this town. The rates here are three times what a lot of other municipalities are. Our property tax bills for the county properties we have went down two percent this year. The city portion added on to it, ate up that two percent, plus put another two percent on top of it. So, we're seeing sizable increases, and it's a heavy burden for us. So, I know the city's working hard to try to expand the tax bases. We've got a new economic developer. We'd like to give her all the help we can and get the tax bases up. As far as the stormwater, we'd like there to be a little more information given as far as where that's going, how much is coming in. Last item quickly, crime. We talk about it every meeting, but folks don't realize how much it's costing them. It's not just the direct victim that's paying. Our insurance agency is seeing rates go way up, and I've had properties where insurers are refusing to quote because of the crime statistics. They're online, everybody can see them, the percentages skew ourselves, but it's something costs everybody in town. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Miles. I'm a business owner in Lake City, and I just want you to document that our concern is about the increase in the water bill. I was shocked when I saw what was happening and realized that this is a continuing charge that we're going to be having to pay. So, we would ask, can you do something about it? Okay? Sure.
My name is Betty Jo Lida, and I'm a business owner here in town, and as well as Rue and Barbara, I'm very concerned about that forty-four dollars that was tacked on to my water bill. It came as a surprise, and a lot of us are running. We're still trying to keep our businesses afloat, and this creates another problem for us. So, we would appreciate it if you all would consider this and help us out in any way that you can.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Beverly Alford, and I have a concern about my bill as well. I'm not sure how they read the meters, because at my house, you can't even see my meter. So, I don't know how they're reading it. My bill, well, the previous reading was thirty-six, twenty-two ninety. Current reading was thirty-six, six thousand. And I'm just trying to find out how they come about charging me when they can't even read my meter. It's not even visible. So, I don't know how they're reading it, and I'd like to get a response on that, please. Thank you.
All right. Legislative, William.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tim. Madam Mayor Pro Tim and council members.
The legislative part of this evening's meeting is ordinance number 2022.020 for the first reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City authorizing the establishment of an economic development incentive program to encourage private investment in the city of Lake City in all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022.020 for first reading. I make a, go ahead.
Okay. Move to approve order 2022.020, first reading.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Yeah. You might not remember this, but we had Lake City Development Corporation years ago. Is this anything like that?
No, sir. No, sir. Nothing in regards to that. This is a program that we have that we can present to those that are interested in coming to the city of Lake City, that you're aware of what tools we are working with. And we use this as a basis to give incentives for those that may be cheatering on the line to we come to Lake City or not. It gives us a hand to be able to offer them some incentives based on what they can bring to the city of Lake City. For example, we've got one that's bringing a five million dollar investment into the city, and they're wanting to know, and with the potential of eight to ten employees for the city of Lake City. But the bottom line is the beginning point. So, this gives us something to be able to work with that y'all agree on, that we can build an agreement with the business partner and come back to you and say, this is what we've offered to them. Do you agree with it? And do you feel like we can move forward with it based on their investment and based on the number of employees coming to the city of Lake City?
All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim and council, ordinance number 2022.021, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Lake City to adopt the 2021 International Codes for the city of Lake City enforcement provisions as provided in the said codes to be effective January 1st, 2023, and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022.021 for first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Can you explain this a little bit more about the codes?
Chief Driggers, this is his area of expertise. I will refer it to him to speak on the international codes.
So, basically, the state of South Carolina gives us the list of codes that we have to adopt. This is codes that's adopted by the state of South Carolina, or the municipalities just have to adopt them also. So, that's just us adopting the state codes that's required by LLR.
Which these codes are used for you to inspect buildings and construction.
International fire codes, international building codes, international electrical codes, property maintenance codes, just a list of codes that come down from the state for municipalities to adopt.
So, that makes sure that we have everybody on the same playing field, and we're doing our due diligence to make sure we're giving safe atmosphere and dwellings for business and homeowners.
Do you have to agree to it?
No, you don't.
But it affects our insurance ratings, right?
If you don't, you also have to figure out some kind of way to adopt your own codes, create your own codes by the international code council, and also if you do that, you will not be building according to codes. The city accepts all liability for construction or anything that's built or occupied. It will fall under the city jurisdiction, so it will actually be the city's liability.
Is this something that we need to do yearly, annually?
It goes around in cycles. It comes every so often whenever the new codes are adopted by the state. It normally takes a year or so for them to adopt by the state house, that they come into effect, and LLR sends it out to all the municipalities, all the counties. Everybody has to adopt it. They give them time to do it. People go into effect on January 1st.
Thank you, chief.
Any more questions? All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim and council members, for your consideration, ordinance number 2022.015, second and final reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City is providing training to employees in anticipation of employees continuing to be working at the city of Lake City for at least three years from completion date of the training, and that the city may recover some or part of the training cost that was invested in all other matters related thereto. And the table showing below that, zero to twelve months, a hundred percent reimbursement, twelve to eighteen months, seventy-five percent, and so on and so on. This is saying that if we've invested thousands of dollars in you to go to school, we want to get some return out of your education. We've had too to just get educated and then leave, but we have nothing to hold back on or be able to recourse to recoup some of our losses.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022.015 for second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim and council members, ordinance number 2022.016, second and final reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of property located at 406, 402 South Ron McNear Boulevard, Lake City, South Carolina, 29560. Tax map number 80010-08-003B, rezone to L-1 Light Industrial, and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022.017 for second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Yeah, is this, is this back at that old furniture company?
Correct. Old Furniture Company, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's where the furniture store used to be? That's where the furniture store used to be?
Yes, sir.
That's go all the way back. I see they cleaned that property.
They bought all that property in the back. They're gonna be tearing that building down.
All in favor by show of hands?
Madam Mayor Pro Tim and council member, ordinance number 2022.019, second and final reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of property located at 137 South McAllister Street, Lake City, South Carolina, 29560. Tax map number 8008-12-001B, rezone to OIA Office Instructional and Apartments, and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022.019 for second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
I got another question. Is this, this is the old Lake City motel property, right? Okay.
Yes. Behind the banks.
Which is a clear lot right now.
It is a clear lot.
All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim and council member, resolution 2022.6060 for final reading. A resolution for the city of Lake City, participate in the municipal association's South Carolina set-off debt collection program. Submitted claims to the association will be forwarded them, forward them to the Department of Revenue by December 1st each and every year, and all matters related thereto. Mayor Pro Tim and council, this is totaled in the Judicial Department, three hundred twenty thousand, eighty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents that were uncollectible. A lot of this had to do with COVID that the court system would not allow them to go after.
I need a motion to approve resolution 2022.060 for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Um, yes. I think my mic is going off. You said this was during?
That's from COVID, during COVID.
This is accumulation of everything that was around COVID.
Accumulation.
Yes, ma'am. And those that just really didn't come in and pay the bill.
Okay, 'cause I was just looking at the dates on here. It says from judicial for July 1st. Is that right? July 1st to 2022 to June?
We start on our fiscal year. So, anything that got carried forward at the first fiscal year with the balance got added into this, 'cause it's a continuous number until they pay it in full.
Okay, so that should have been 2021. Should that? Okay, just, yeah, 'cause that was confusing me.
What's the chances of collecting any of it?
We got about, I'm gonna say nine thousand dollars last year.
After December 1st, that's when?
December 1st is when we have to have the documents in so they can have them affixed to the taxpayers' tax account. So, when the tax return hits for them to send the money back, it gets frozen, and it gets sent out to us or whomever else may have a claim against that. Hospitals are also doing it as well. Power companies as well.
Excuse me. Can you turn my mic to...
May need to change the batteries. Oh, did you?
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Correct. Old Furniture Company, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's where the furniture store used to be? That's where the furniture store used to be?
Yes, sir.
That's go all the way back. I see they clean that property.
They bought all that property in the back. They're gonna be tearing that building down.
All in favor by a show of hands?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Member, ordinance number twenty twenty-two point oh one nine, second and final reading, an ordinance for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of property located at one thirty-seven, South McAllister Street, Lake City, South Carolina, two nine five six oh, tax map number eight hundred zero eight dash twelve dash zero zero one, be rezoned to O I A, office instructional and apartments and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two point zero one nine for second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions?
I got another question. Is this, uh, this is the old Lake City motel property, right? Okay.
Yes. Behind the banks.
Which is a clear lot right now.
It is a clear lot.
All in favor by a show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Member, resolution twenty twenty-two point six oh six oh for final reading, a resolution for the City of Lake City, participate in the Municipal Association of South Carolina Set Off Debt Collection Program. Submitted claims to the association will be forwarded them, forward them to the Department of Revenue by December first each and every year and all matters related thereto. Uh, Mayor, um, Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council, this is a total in the Judicial Department, three hundred twenty thousand, eighty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents that were uncollectible. A lot of this had to do with COVID that the court system would not allow them to go after.
I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero six zero for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Um, yes. I think my mic is going off. Um, you say this was during? Um, debts from COVID, during COVID?
This is accumulation of everything that was around COVID, yes ma'am. And those that just really didn't come in and pay the bill.
Okay, 'cause I was just looking at the dates on here. It says from judicial for July first. Is that right? July first to twenty twenty-two to June?
We start on our fiscal year. So anything that got carried forward at the first fiscal year with the balance got added into this, 'cause it's a continuous number until they pay it in full.
Okay, so that should have been twenty twenty-one. Should that? Okay, just, yeah, 'cause that was confusing me.
Um, we got about, I'm gonna say nine thousand dollars last year.
After December the first, that's when?
On December first is when we have to have the documents in so they can have them affixed to the taxpayers' tax account. So when the tax return hits for them to send the money back, it gets frozen. And it gets sent out to, uh, to us or whomever else may have a claim against that. Hospitals are also doing it as well. Power companies as well. May need to change the batteries. Oh, did you?
That's good.
Thank you. All in favor by a show of hands? Next item.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Member, resolution number twenty twenty-two points oh six one for final reading, a resolution for Lake City to participate in the Municipal Association of South Carolina Set Off Debt Collection Program. Submitted claims to the association will forward them to the Department of Revenue by December first of each year. Uh, this is for the water bills. Uh, this year they're at one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cent. So we're way down from what we used to be.
I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero six one for final reading.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? All in favor by a show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Member, resolution twenty twenty-two point oh six two for final reading, a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, for approval to bring onboard an after-school paid intern for the Public Information Office. This Public Information Intern will work closely with the Public Information Officers to assist with planning, marketing events, researching, and writing media releases, web content, and articles. They are also to process images and update social media with the proper guidance. This is the same type of environment or the same type of program we did at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, to bring on after they finish their classes, um, to assist and learn the ins and outs of public information. We will offer to pay them ten dollars an hour for their, um, endeavors.
I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero six two for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Uh, we, um, that's loud.
We hear you.
Yeah. Um, for the, um, you said this would be, um, for after-school, for a student, for after-school?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that only for the students here in Florence School District Three?
Lake City.
Just for Lake City students?
We're working with, uh, Mr. Burgess, uh, to, to, to let the children know who's interested in that environment. Uh, they will do a two-hundred-word essay. They will also fill out an application, and they will go through an interview process, and that's how we'll choose them.
What age group or grade levels?
High school.
Okay, so ninth through twelfth?
Not, the, the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, the high school.
Sixteen, seventeen, okay.
We want them to be, have some guidance to where we can give them some influence on what they might wanna do when they leave high school. And at that age, they have some sense of they're in art or media or news, so it just will just be some encouragement, but also give them some after-school activities and endeavors.
How many children you talk about?
One. On this program, just one. Well, the office, the office is only so big. One, one intern. Yeah, one intern. So one special person will be chosen. Yes, ma'am.
And for how many hours?
Um, we're saying three to five.
Three to five?
Yeah. When they get out of school, and if they get out early and they wanna come and participate, that's, um, it's gonna be open. It's not gonna be a demanding op, it's gonna be an opportunity for them. We're not gonna demand that you have to be here. If they have something else to do after school to, for the school program at their, uh, where they're at, we're not gonna hold that against.
Well, this is a paid internship.
Yes, we will give them ten dollars an hour for being there.
Okay, and how long is this internship supposed to be?
Till school's out.
Till school is out.
Or they decide they don't wanna do it anymore. But we want at least offer it through the school year.
Okay.
And we could try to do something elsewhere, but then when you start coming over to our office, then you start dealing with confidential information, social security cards, and driver's license, and, and we don't wanna get involved in, in that.
Okay.
All in favor by a show of hands?
All right. Um. Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Members, for your approval, resolution twenty twenty-two point oh six three, final reading, the approved, the approved entering into a two-month contract with M R B Group. M R B Group provides a service by researching available grant funding opportunities through federal, state, foundation agencies, and organizations that support the city's funding needs and priorities. This service will be focused on coal road, the gym, the solar farm, for the City of Lake City and all matters related thereto. And if you, you have a program on this company, um, there's, we've contacted, I've talked with four of the other municipalities that are using them for a specific reason. Uh, this would be a specific reason. This would be, they'll come in the door knowing they have two months, and we are not going past that. But it gives, Hattie's already said that this area is not her expertise. So we reached out and found this company, and the, every one of these people worked through the Municipal Association or have worked in the county and also are a municipality. So they're familiar with what we are up against trying to get funding for specific tasks.
I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero six three for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
So at this group, at the end of two months that we're giving them, there's nothing to say, if we want to say, okay, this is the end of the contract, there's nothing in the contract stating that they can go more than two months?
It's specifically stated to them, you have two months, and these are our priorities. Tell me what you can do.
Okay.
It was specifically stated to them, and they said they were willing to take the challenge.
Okay.
And before we go into any opportunity with them, we will make sure the contract specifically states coal road, solar farm, and you have sixty days.
Any more questions? All in favor by a show of hands? All opposed?
I'm sorry, I'm green.
Oh.
I'm four.
Okay.
I'm four. Yes.
All right, all right. Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Members, uh, the monthly financial report that you have in front of you, which is through September thirtieth, um, general fund, we brought in seven twenty-three thousand dollars. That's eight percent of the budget. We spent two million eight seventy-two, thirty-one percent of the budget. We have overspent our revenue, but that's particular, that is normal for this time of year. Business license and taxes start coming in into, into December, January, and February, and that's when we'll start seeing our funds start flowing in. But we do have the money in the bank to cover our bills. That's a good thing. The water fund, we have a revenue of four hundred and six thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's twenty-two percent of the budget. We have expenditures of five hundred and sixty-six thousand four forty-three. That's thirty-one percent of the budget. So we've overspent the water by fifty-two thousand dollars. But I'll remind you that July and August, September, we did not do our rate increase, and we did not charge late fees, and we did not, uh, enforce our disconnection. So in a roundabout way, we probably lost, if everything dealing with the billing error and the revenue loss, um, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the sewer fund, we have revenues at eight hundred and one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. That's twenty-six percent of the budget. We have expenses of one point six million. That's fifty-two percent of the budget. We've done well repairs. We've had sewer pipe repairs. We've had sewer pump stations go down. So we're doing a lot of repair work here. This also includes the, um, stormwater drainage. Uh, that was fifty-six thousand to get landing in, and, um, Rogers Street back open. So that's in this number. So we have overspent by eight hundred thousand dollars. So these are the financials for the month of September, first quarter of the year. Mayor, Cal, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council, for your consideration, uh, bills, number one through eight, for your consideration and approval to pay, bills one through eight.
The fuel, fuel man bill just didn't pay in, or what happened?
We, we've had a staff change, and we're getting the bills caught up. Uh, and if you'll notice that one of these bills goes back to July. It was never paid. We, we reconciled the account. We owe them this money, and then we're paying the, the normal month that we have to pay. Uh, bills are, the, the cost of fuel is going up, so we're seeing an increase in the cost of what we pay to operate our equipment.
I need a motion to approve bills one through eight for October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve bills one through eight.
Second.
October eleventh, twenty-two.
Sorry, second.
Properly moved in second. Any other questions? All in favor by a show of hands?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Member, thank you for your time. I'm going to, uh, Chief Cooper to give you a public safety report update. Chief?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, Council, for month of September, total calls for service, seven hundred and seventy-nine. Out of the seven hundred and seventy-nine calls for service, we had two hundred and eighteen. There were traffic stops. Um, the alarms for burglaries were ninety, nine zero. Domestic calls were thirty-three. Uh, disorderly conduct was seventeen. Traffic collisions, thirty-six. Assaults were seventeen. Discharging firearms, three. Trespassing was thirty. Um, that's just for the incidents reported. For traffic itself, um, total citations issued were eighty-seven, and they encompass vehicle license violations and driving on suspension. Total incidents for reports that was counted was a hundred and thirty-one, dealing with traffic. Warrants served were approximately thirty-five warrants served, well, warrants issued. Six of them were served out of the thirty-five. And we transported twelve individuals to the Florence County Sheriff's Office Detention Center for the month of September.
Why, why would you have thirty-five warrants issued and only six?
'Cause we can, what we do is when a person commits a tra, commits any type crime that warrants a actual arrest warrant, meaning after the fact, we go talk to the judge, and the judge, well, if we can present enough probable cause to the judge based on the actual incident, they will give us authorization to arrest the person at a later date. In some cases, like maybe shoplifting, uh, petty larceny, things of that nature, um, we can actually draft a warrant for a person's arrest, and sometimes it's not, uh, possible for us to put hands on them right then to try to arrest them or locate them there at the time. So we can draft ten warrants in one week for a crime that happened a couple of months ago and not be able to serve them. And with the, uh, six being served on this one, these warrants were done in conjunction of traffic violation and actually at-home domestic violence situation, that were the officers actually on scene and witnessed what happened. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Cooper. Um, Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, and Council Members, that's all we have for you tonight, uh, and thank you for your time.
Council member reports, and we will start with Council member Cook.
Thank y'all for coming out tonight. Remember, uh, November, election. It's a right you have, and it's a right you ought to use. And if you don't, don't complain to anybody else. Thank y'all for coming.
Okay.
Can I ask, do you have announcements? For like events or, I don't wanna cover that.
Okay. Um, thank everyone for coming out. Um, I thank everybody for bringing their concerns. Um, this is in, um, coming out here and viewing on Facebook. Um, this is the way that we get things, you know, handled and done together by bringing your concerns and staying involved and staying informed with what's going on in, in our great city of Lake City. Um, Mr. Alford, Mr. Brown, Ms. Barbara Miles, and all the business, um, people, we were definitely, I can say, we were definitely look back into this, and we know that it's, it's affecting. We can tell that it's affecting, and we will definitely follow up back with you, um, at, at, soon, at a, um, early time. Um, thank you for coming out with your concerns. Um, also, be aware of the different events that we have going on in the month of October. We are a busy little city. Um, we have, just to name a few, we have the Ronnie McNear five K walk and run this, this Saturday. Um, also the domestic violence walk and the fire prevention, uh, week parade going on this Saturday. Um, October twenty-second, we will be having a citywide cleanup at eight AM that morning, and, uh, the Blue Rose Gala, sponsored by the Farrah Turner Foundation that evening. Uh, October twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, we will have Lake City High School alumni homecoming weekend. Um, the thirty-first will be City of Lake City Halloween down Main Street, if I'm correct on that. Um, so we're staying busy. So, um, everybody just stay safe and stay involved. Um, let's keep our mayor continuously in the prayers as he's going through certain health issues. Um, also, let's keep a fellow councilman, um, from Atlantic Beach that I just learned this morning, who was tragically killed, and that was Councilman James DeWitt from Atlantic Beach. Um, his family in, in the town of Atlantic Beach is in our prayers. Um, please remember to get out and vote, like Councilman Cook stated. Um, October twenty-fourth to November fifth will be early voting, and November eighth is Election Day. And remember, your vote matters, so make it count. Thank you.
Again, thanks to everyone that came out to night to witness our, uh, meeting and to see so many, the concern about the water situation and all that going on in the city. Uh, I believe and I know if we continue to work together, we can make Lake City a great city. And, uh, it'd take all of us, it'd take the whole village in order to change things. And I spoke with the chief to look into that situation that I spoke about, uh, uh, earlier about, uh, you know, the area. When you see a lot of stuff start accumulating, junk and stuff of that, you can look for crime. So, uh, I, I'm very concerned about that in my area. People start piling up and, and just leaving these abandoned buildings and stuff of that. And so we have to be concerned about our neighbors that, um, because empty builders and empty lots, it, it, people think this is to throw all their mattresses and all that stuff on it. That it, it ain't none of mine to just throw it there. Every day I get trash, I mean, I can pick up a, a can of trash every day around my, my area. I'm on the corner, and, uh, this walk by and say, oh, the sky probably needs some paper. So they throw it out. But, uh, anyhow, we, if we work together, we can make Lake City a great city, which it is a great city. And election time is now, and don't forget to vote. Early voting starts, and we can vote at the library here in Lake City. You don't have to go all the way to Florence. So anyone that need a ride, uh, there's people that out there and willing to help. And I, I for one, anyone need a ride to, uh, vote here in Lake City, let me know, and I'll be glad to get someone to pick you up. And let's be concerned about our neighbors. So let's vote. Uh, your vote count too. That one vote makes a difference. And thanks again to everyone for the past twelve years. I love Lake City. I've enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out and make sure to vote next month.
Halloween is October thirty-first. Do we wish to impose a curfew? Um, normally it's, what, eight o'clock? Cynthia? Cynthia, where are you? Normally it's eight o'clock, correct? Is that all okay with you, eight o'clock? All right, thank you. Send them home.
Uh, Cynthia? All right, okay. All right, okay.
If I also may add that the meeting for next month, since Election Day, is on November 8th, which will be the second Tuesday. We're going to have the meeting November 7th, that Monday, at 6:00 p.m. right here. And I also want to thank Ms. Brown for coming and introducing herself to the city. Thank you. Sending your prayers. Also, to Chief Cooper, his staff and the rest of the city. On Saturday, they had the masquerade ball. It was very nice. I was in attendance, and you did a great job. Looking forward to it next year.